Hey, this is Linda. Can you guys hear me?
Don't trip, don't trip.
I'll be happy to chair the
Bruce Perry has got his hand up.
Can't get too many participants, but let me know if some make this one.
He has his hand up.
Goodness, Rowers.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our April 27th, Portman Town Council meeting.
We continue with our budget. Before we begin, if we could all rise for a moment of silence for our women serving arms way.
Let's literally just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British States, one nation under God, individual liberate.
Thank you all. Shit, we could do our roll call.
Here.
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 Mr. Hamilton.
Here.
Ellie.
Here.
Dr. Ryan.
Here.
Dr. Yar.
Here.
Before we get started, I just want to figure out why we have two hands up. You want to mute Bruce Perry? Hi, Bruce? Bruce, can you unmute if you can hear us? Bruce Perry? You have your hand up. We're just trying to figure out. We haven't even started. All right, let me just do a little housekeeping. For those of you who are participating tonight at home, if you're on the Zoom, you should be able to use the icon to raise your hand to indicate you have a question or comment. If you're calling in from home, star nine will indicate you have a question. Star six will mute and unmute your device. When speaking tonight, if you're called upon, please state your name and address for the town clerk. And if I also would just like to remind all of the, you know, panelists and stuff, when speaking tonight, try to speak clearly into the microphone. We did have last night, so we're just trying to make sure we get everybody, everybody accounted for and can hear you clearly. So, thank you. Can we just go back to Bruce or Kathy just so we can either clear their hands or find out what's going on? Bruce Perry, can you hear us? Bruce? All right, Bruce, I'm gonna assume you still have a question. How about Kathy? Can we try Kathy? They did me. I just accidentally hit the icon. Kathy, can you hear us?
I can. I, I just wanted to let you know I'm here.
Okay, all right. Yeah, you could put your hand up.
I did.
All right, thank you. All right. Hey. That was the hardest part of my evening. Okay, under due business, we're gonna continue administrator's budget. Tonight, we would spend it for our plans to cover expenditures, civic support, DIP, police, fire, EDP.
At this point, we're gonna call up the school first and superintendent, Dr. Kennedy, I know has presentation together with the school finance director, Chris Dioro, so.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to present this evening on behalf of the school department. I'll be presenting this evening budget for fiscal year 22, which I know Mr. Reagan presented a high-level overview last evening of the entire town budget. And I'm here to present some of the highlights of the school department's budget and of course, with Dr. Copeland, our school committee chair, Mr. Chris Dioro, Director of Finance, who will be joining me for part of the presentation. We would be happy to answer any questions. I will be highlighting some budget numbers today, obviously, and I know that last evening Serena indicated that late last week, we received updates to our health and dental premiums. And so he has made those adjustments within the town budget, the town council publicly seeing. Our school committee approved budget did not reflect those numbers because they just came in late last week. And so some of the numbers in my presentation won't quite match Mr. Reader's numbers. I will point out where those differences are during my presentation. And again, those are related to the reduction in health and dental premiums. Next slide, please. So I wanted to start this evening again, and what has kind of led us to this point, I'm presenting a school committee approved budget, but you know, that process does not just happen overnight. So for us on the school side, that process typically begins in October, pretty after we've settled into the new school year. And we bring together all of the principals, directors, you know, key district leaders, and make sure that they have all of the information they will need to begin work on preparing the next year's fiscal year's budget. Those individuals then go back to work with, you know, on the school side, their school improvement teams and other key stakeholders throughout the district, making a true collaborative process. They do that through November and December, and before we leave for the holiday break, their, their budgets are submitted for review. We spend the month of January on the district administration side reviewing those budgets with our school committee, finance subcommittee. And each principal or district department leader gets to make a presentation, answer questions, anything in their budget. And then we get a final budget ready to present to the school committee. We do that over three school committee meetings in February and March. We need up to, was typically the last school committee meeting in March, which this year was March 23rd. And our school committee, then at that meeting takes a vote, and that is the budget that you will see me presenting on this evening. And we will be asking for town council approval. So there's a lot of work that goes into that, a lot of collaboration, obviously, along the way, and you're gonna, you're gonna hear a lot of numbers in, in, in my presentation this evening. And just know that those numbers in many cases would have been, you know, much higher in areas where we are fully aware always of, you know, the fiscal support that we receive from the town. We try to, well, we have an important mission, and you can go to the next slide. Your mission, which is highlighted here in our school department strategic plan goals, priority goals. Our mission is to engage all students in rigorous learning opportunities supported by a high-quality and challenging curriculum, superior teaching to prepare them to thrive in an ever-changing world. Our DPE goals within our strategic plan, they drive everything that we do in our district each and every day, and including very much here. What we use in the budgeting process. So while we want to make sure that we always keep the focus on active rigor, ensuring those eventual opportunities for all students to be able to graduate college and career-ready, provide them with social emotional supports that they need, make sure that our highly trained teaching staff continues to receive with professional development and thinking, communicate frequently and often with our stakeholders. That is never more important than this past year during the pandemic and trying to keep our schools functioning. And of course, keeping focused on safe and modern facilities and best support student learning. So those, those goals drive everything we do, drive the budgeting process. We certainly make sure, and we believe that the budget I will be presenting to you this evening will enable us to be able to do that. We are also well aware on the school leadership and school committee side. We try to do this in a fiscally prudent manner as well. So a high-level overview of our budget on the expenditure side, and this is these slides that I will be presenting on will be leading to the operating budget. So for our operating expenditures, these were the numbers that we arrived at on March 23rd that the school committee voted to approve again after many months of collaborative effort and trying to make sure that we were streamlining our budget as much as possible to be able to meet our strategic plan goals. So we arrived at these expenditure numbers, and these do not reflect the health and dental changes that Mr. Rea mentioned last evening. So on the school department side, that is a reduction of a total of $46,806. So that brings our proposed FY '22 budget to $41,220, as we, this is reflected in Serena's budget, which is an increase of $682,421 over last fiscal year. So again, in a roughly $40 million budget, we try to be as fiscally prudent as possible, but there are a lot of increases that are hard to control within all of our budgets. So that overall increase in our operating expenses that you see reflected there is now a 1.7% increase. The highlights that I listed here, again, while we were well aware of the budget climate that we are in and a lot of uncertainty in Mr. Rea, so we did an excellent job on the town leadership side, making sure that all, all departments were keeping those things in mind. These numbers certainly would have been a lot higher in, in previous drafts that we reviewed internally on the school department side. With that, in, in these final numbers that you see reflected, our main highlights here are that there are no FTE, that's for full-time equivalent on the school department side, staffing increases. So we did make some staffing changes. We were always on the education side, making sure how, how things are changing for best support teaching and learning. But we try, always try to do that as much as possible with the commission internally. So you will not see any, any increase reflected in this budget on the staffing side. We were already working our way towards a full one-to-one technology for our students. Obviously, what we were forced to do in the pandemic last spring just completed that picture for us. So we are now fully one-to-one PK through 12. If all students have a device available for them at school, you know, 90% of our students that are really young students take those devices home. That obviously requires a tremendous amount of support to make that happen. High-quality curriculum has become a, a very important focus in, you know, today's education world. And so we make sure that we continue to support that curriculum renewal cycle within our budget. We worked with both of our main unions on the school department side and negotiated a one-year extension to their contracts that reflected 1% salary increase. So trying to can work collaboratively with our unions, we try to get that number as low as possible. I can assure you, in, in the work, we will continue to be on the school department side, that number will stay reflected in any contract that is awarded by the school committee over the year of the year. As you know, we are fortunate to have two school resource officers that we worked collaboratively with the police department in supporting our schools. We have always typically provided funding to help support. One of, of those officers this year was the final expiration of the top grant that we had been working, taking advantage of the last years, which supported the second SRO. Serena, early on in the budget process, let us know. So we need sure we have funding to support keeping those two SROs. We increased double our, our support on the school department side for that. And, you know, within these budget numbers, we had two, in addition to those negotiations with our two main key contracts for any district transportation is a huge driver of expenditures for school departments. So we were able to negotiate a new fiscally prudent transportation contract, contract in collaboration with the town, one of our shared services, same facilities. So on the revenue side, where account appropriation comes in, again, this is to support our operating budget. So for those expenditures, with the adjustments for health and dental, we would be asking this evening for support from the town council for a town appropriation of $35,447,182, an overall increase of $876,304, reflecting that, that final percent change within the 2.5% increase on the operating side. So I mentioned that we, we designed this budget trying to be as fiscally prudent as possible, making sure that we could still achieve those important goals that we have to support our mission and, and support our students in the teaching and learning that takes place every day in our schools. The town appropriation request before you this evening is really being driven there, I would say, you know, more so than the fiscally prudent manner we were able to develop our budget in by a decrease, unfortunately, once again in revenue production, revenue projections from the state funding formula. And also because of, mainly because of the pandemic, our two main sources of out-of-district tuition, our contract with, that enables little comped students to attend Portsmouth High School and out-of-district students who are able to come into our CTE programs. Both of those were also affected this year due to the pandemic, and all districts saw an increase in the number of parents who are sending home school students. I'll just point out, and you, you've heard this back in January, where we had our first overview of the budget process. We were not anticipating, as you are aware, the, the reduction in CTE. We had completed last year the 10-year reduction in Portsmouth, 10, 11 years ago now, the state of Rhode Island, we configured the funding formula. There were some districts that ended up winners and losers, so to speak, Portsmouth. We were well aware for 10 years, we were a quote-unquote loser and had to factor in those adjustments on the school and town side. We weren't expecting that when that 10-year period ended last year, that we would, if not see any, you know, hopeful, you know, we're hopeful of a slight increase in CTE funding or at least level funding. Unfortunately, we did see another reduction. So now for 11 straight years, we have seen that reduction. As you know, as if we sit here this evening talking about our request for the town appropriation, that is where the burden falls. So again, just to point out, we are, we wanted to get through this budget process and our state legislators are well aware that we will be engaging with them again to try to uncover, you know, why Portsmouth is once again kind of coming up on the losing end of the funding formula. It's very complicated in, in all of the different areas. So we will do that work, but again, over these past 11 years, we have lost over $2 million in CTE. So we certainly appreciate what that has meant on, on the town side to support our, our high-functioning school district. Next slide, please. So I wanted to include this slide. This is in a five-year summary of, obviously, for the four previous fiscal years, even the actual numbers of where we ended up in our overall operating budget with that percent increase was what that then meant with town appropriation. That increase, and then later, you'll be hearing Mr. Dioro on the capital budget. So you have those numbers there as well. Obviously, for fiscal year '22, those are the projected numbers. You have to again mark in those, those, those changes based on the health and dental premiums. So it's really the 1.7% overall increase in our expenditures, which would require, once those health and dental premiums are back within 2.5% of town appropriation. So as you can see, the, the average of those over the past five years would be one, you know, it actually comes in, but we are this year, 1.7% expenditure increase on a $40 million budget for a high-functioning school district, trying to make sure that we keep that focus on graduating all of our students college and career-ready. And if, if you approve our, our request this evening, that would bring the five-year average for the town appropriation to 2.3%. So if it were not for that steady reduction in CTE that we continue to see, that number would keep going on. I just wanted to point out, as, as you are well aware on the town side, we do have a big number of shared services. So within, in the budget numbers that you see reflected there, our shared services in technology and facilities, that is about an E20 ratio, if you will, you know, the school department definitely gets the majority of the services, but in both technology and facilities, the, the town is able to take advantage of the personnel that we have there. That was never dissuaded more than if you happened to be able to see the operation at the Raytheon Vaccination Site, or able to get your vaccine there. That was a great collaborative effort on the school and town side. You know, all of the technology that was used there, getting the infrastructure up and running for technology support, you know, through our technology department and obviously facility for working with the town personnel, we're able to get that site both operational and then by, by this time, we also had to scan that site down as the stain shifted efforts to the region sites. I already mentioned the SROs. Do we not have two SROs within the district that support our schools? We fully, on the school department side, pay half of the cost of each of those. Those individuals obviously also do work for the police department and the number of schools. Our utility contracts, just wanted to point out, Mr. Dioro, just, you know, we, we're happy to have this last meeting on board now, but we have had quite a bit of turnover as you're aware. Town finance side last year, Mr. Dioro has taken the lead just as contracts come up in areas of natural gas, electricity, where we have to factor in wind turbine. All, all of those things are shared services as well between the town and school department. Bureau helps to negotiate those, those prices. And then we have a great prevention coalition. So they do a lot of work within our schools, but there's also, you know, a, a town function that, that serves as well. So we, over the last few years, there have been questions since we made sure that we've included, and Mr. Rea has it included in the town, town budget side. So this slide, just wanted to point out in my presentation, would, would factor in. So we have our, our operating budget, which can include that, that 1.7% increase. And we have a number of what we call restricted federal funds. And they, they come in through a, a federal grant program run by the state. There are a lot of rules and regulations around these. They, they support special education services. That brought in from students receiving free earnings lunch. There's additional money that comes in to support our CTE programs. All of these are, 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 are then written for and, and have to be spent for specific purposes. There's a separate auditing process for these funds. We talk about that every year at this time. I just wanted to point out where they are reflected in our budget. Next slide. And so this slide, I wanted to add, based on, you know, I, I, last year was my first presentation as superintendent, and I had to prepare as much as I could for everything in my presentation. And when I got to the questions, and I understand most of the questions ended up being about surplus funds that we were carrying. So I just wanted to make sure that this year, this information was, was fully here so we could be as transparent as possible. So when we talk about any surplus funds on the school department side, for us, they would fall into these three areas. So last year, as you know, we had a lot of discussion around this time of, as we were heading into the early stages of the pandemic and recommendations that were coming down on both the town and school department side, that we should do everything we could to reserve some funds for, for the next school year, which would be this current year for COVID-related costs, unanticipated costs that, you know, by, by the time the pandemic really hit last year, we were already kind of at this stage in the budget process. So last year, I had requested the school committee approve a one-time exception to our fund surplus policy, which I'll reference a little later, and directed any surplus that we had last year to go into this special restricted little fund for COVID-related expenses. So the final number on that was that $720,104. With that, we received some additional federal funding, which you are aware. We were also able to apply for some special funding put on the state side that was available for COVID-related purposes. So all in, that's what would represent that $1,282,179. Figure that is, those are the funds that we have been using to record to support our COVID-related needs. Figure that is, those are the funds that we have been using to record to support our COVID related needs. So these have included. Everything from additional support for our nurses, additional custodians, any additional needs, supplies, additional support for this morning. We, at the time I was preparing all of this, so that number has probably changed. So we anticipate it's going to continue to change. We had that $147,131 remaining. So again, we expended the majority of those funds. School to have additional COVID related expenses coming in for a change purpose. So I expect, you know, that was a great use of. Those funds this year have really supported our efforts to keep schools open. The next category, the piece of our surplus is what you see there as it applies to our general funds. So. You know, each year our school department does run a slight surplus and the alternative to that would. Be running a deficit, which we certainly would not want to do. So a few years ago, our school department researched and sought advice on different policies. Procedures that school districts use in the context of surplus. So we have a policy that directs, you know, our surplus, which is usually much less than that $720,000 surplus. From last year and that related to, let's see, the closing schools from March on. But we keep 1.5% of our overall operating budget in a reserve, a fund. So that's that $593,786 figure represented there. And then on the school department side, and just based on advice from different audits and actuarial findings, we keep. That $340,000 reserve, we needed it for OEP expenses related to retirees. Additionally, we have a surplus account that we use for capital, unanticipated capital expenses that come up. So. Any surplus we have in a typical year, and I assume this year we will move back to this practice last year, was the one time exception where we directed this money. To the COVID fund. So after directing that one, that money in 1.5% figure. For our rebate fund, any money that's left there would then go into this reserve capital surplus fund. So that money is typically higher than it would be at this point right now. There are two main reasons for that. The first is COVID. Right? Our focus this year has been just making sure that our schools are running as safely as possible, trying to get through. You know, this pandemic school year. Also, I will show you turning this over to Mr. Dero to talk about our capital needs for next year. But we do not have, and we are well, we try to be well aware that on the school department side, we do not have an approved. Right approved capital plan right now, which means that anything that we do in the area of capital expenses. It's not eligible for housing aid, which I think goes back to the town side. So we have. Tried to have any major unanticipated capital expenses this year. Next slide. Also wanted to include, and I know last evening we heard about on the town side, funds that will be coming. Through the American Rescue Plan. But tool side, you sometimes hear that referred to as KIRZAC or ESSER, the elementary and secondary schools education. So ESSER 1 was part of those COVID related federal monies that I very coughed about. That would be in chief helping us and for our COVID expenses. In the last days of the Trump presidency and the last Congress, they passed legislation that led to the ESSER 2 funding. And then with the Biden administration and the new Congress, they've passed now the ESSER 4. So that's why you see all these different variations of ESSER. So much like on the town side, these will be heavily restricted funds that have to be used for very specific purposes. Two is projected, we have not seen, you know, final numbers for either of these. These are projections. Based on we've heard, so that 894,792,000 figure would be for S2. We have seen a lot of information on what the anticipation of ESSER 2 will be used for. So it's this. Accelerating learning loss, coming up with new interview. All, all school districts have developed practices this year through necessity to, you know, to get us through. In the pandemic, but we've also realized that in some ways we're reaching students, you know, differently. And meeting their needs for some students better than we have been through traditional means. So. That's mainly on the school department side, what these ESSER funds are designed to be used for over the next two school years. At least on the school department side. Again, we have, you know, the Biden administration's size one was bigger than ESSER. So we have that figure. Which is reflected there as a projection. We have not seen any guidance. We're expecting the guidance to be very similar to what we received for S2. Next slide. So last slide for me, and I mean, I'm kind of going through each of these, but I just wanted to highlight again, as you know. I think we try to, we're very grateful for all the support that we receive. Through our town funding and allocation. And we try to use that money wisely and to produce a good product. And we have. You have many, many more things in this that I highlighted if I wanted to, but. We have the state teacher of the year in our race this year, that I'm aware of, a faculty for it. Portsmouth High School. Today, we learned that Portsmouth High School was ranked number four in Rhode Island. Last few years, we've held on to that very strong ranking. And we'll see some of the highlights there reflected through Portsmouth High School. Really, you know, that is a combination of everything that happens throughout our entire district, you know, takes students from. Kids are through that graduation stage. The fourth bullet I was going to highlight anyway this evening. You know, just talk about some of the great work that's been done. If you haven't seen the new outdoor classroom space at Nobel. You definitely worth taking a look at. Afterward, it has plans underway to, you know, design an equally impressive space. Portsmouth Middle School has, you know, utilized space near the school for this innovation farm. That our students are able to take advantage of. So all of, all of these activities are very much needed. You know, and support this outdoor learning. These things have only increased during the pandemic. These would have been, you know, just a few of the things that we were just recently awarded a green ribbon for from the US Department of Education. So most people are familiar with the blue ribbon, academic excellence. The green ribbon is for environmental sustainability excellence. It's only school district in Rhode Island to have received that award. So in that announcement just came down recently. You know, I mentioned that all, all year from day one, we've had full in-person learning. All the way up through grade six, grades seven through 12, they're fully in-person now and have at least been hybrid all year. With that, we've also been able to offer athletic programs, paying for it, trying to keep that experience. And obviously they look different than they did, but trying to keep that experience there as much as possible for our students. And then lastly, we talked about ESSER and the plans we have in place. You will just see new innovative ideas coming forward. From our districts to help strengthen the opportunities we have for our students. And of course, that continued partnership with the town. And as we have to get that. Capital facilities plan approved so that we can, we can take advantage of as much funding on the state side as possible for those needs. So. With that, I'm going to turn these over to Mr. Dero for our last slide, which relates to our capital.
Good evening. Can, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Back in 2018, the General Assembly passed a law phasing in a mandated maintenance expenditure level. The district's annual facilities capital request is an important part of our ability to meet those state required expenditures. For FY22, the minimum required maintenance level is 2.5% of the total operating budget for the school department. Our last approved five year capital plan was completed, as Dr. Kenworthy mentioned, this past summer. So we don't qualify for any new housing aid on any capital projects until we have a new stage two approved. And it is our intention to bring that forward to the town council very shortly. But in the meantime, we do still have an obligation to meet the requirements under the law. Our FY22 capital budget request is for $469,000. And that'll support an approximately 19,200 square foot Portsmouth High School roof replacement over the library and art suite, which. It's hard to see there, but it's kind of in the northeast section there. The project's total cost is actually $528,000. However, the $59,000 difference, we're proposing to be covered by savings. From this past summer's project, which came in under budget.
Was that great?
That's it.
Great. Thank you, Ted. We know you have all of the backup to support both the operating capital requests. In our whole school department documents that were submitted. So I thank you again for the opportunity to present this evening. And we are very grateful for the support, and it's what we always get from the town. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Any questions from councillors?
Want me to go through the budget first?
I have one quick question, Mr. President.
Yeah.
Dr. Kenworthy, you mentioned that the SROs are in the school department budget, but I see them in the police department budget. Where are they? And. How are they shaking out? I see there's 52,000, two sets of $52,081 in the police department budget. So is that $104,000 roughly in your budget as well?
No, I believe that would be on top of the support that we provide on the school department side. Just make sure you correct me on that. But yeah, the number all in for each of those would include salary and benefits, I assume. So I know on the school department side, we contribute $40,000. We had always traditionally for past years, attributed that for one SRO. This year that was decreased to $80,000 to.
Where specifically? Because I just went through the entire budget again. Your budget presentation, your budget book, excuse me. And maybe Chris, you could find it for me real quick and just say page, you know, 19 or wherever it is, but I don't see a line item specifically listing the SROs.
Yeah, absolutely. I can do that. It's, if you are on page 19.
Yep.
It is line 53406. If you look off to the right, it says major change explanation support for second SRO.
Both of them. It's just listed as other services, not as SROs. That's why I couldn't find it.
Oh, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Both in there.
All right, and that's $80,000?
That is correct, yep.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mr. President.
So. We'll stay on the topic of the school. And if you would go to page 80 of the town administrator's post budget. Okay. Here you can see the summary of the proposed town and state aid funding for the school department for the next fiscal year. As just been briefed by the superintendent, the school committee has approved the school administration proposed budget. Which includes a request for a town appropriation of $35,493,987. As was just briefed, since the adoption of the proposed school budget by the school committee, we have received an actual premium. Or the actual premium rates for both health and dental coverage, which are lower than we had originally anticipated. This resulted in a $46,806 savings in anticipated healthcare costs for the school department. From therefore recommending a town appropriation of $35,447,181. And then you can see midway through the page there that the school committee has also approved, as was just briefed by Mr. Dero, the capital request of $469,000. So there's a summary of the town, of the request from the town. If we go to the next page, on page 81. We'll go through the school budget and what needs to be provisionally approved. So the school unrestricted and restricted budget, so this briefing, the budget, the total school budget, unrestricted and restricted. The school's total budget, which includes both of those funds, begins on this page in page 81. So at the very top, you'll see there's federal aid that projected to be $180,000. In the middle, you'll see the makeup of their state aid funds. That totals $3,802,07. Then that section just at the bottom, the restricted revenue, which are the federal revenues that seem to come up every year. We make sure that they're included in the budget. Those figures total $1,913,125. So if we go to the next page, page 82. The school does receive miscellaneous revenue from a number of sources. That miscellaneous revenue is projected to be $1,794,832. And then you'll see the town enforcement funding, which I just briefed in page eight. Total school town appropriation projected to be $35,916,181. So if you sum all those figures, we get a total town, federal and state funding of the school budget. In the amount of $43,604,345. We therefore ask the council to provisionally approve the total school restricted and unrestricted budget in the amount of $43,604,345.
Thank you, Mr. Ren. Do you have any questions, comments for councillors?
Sure. Barbara, can you bring up slide, PSD five year budget summary slide? Slide in. Okay. I like this slide. This is great information. I also like inflation rates. So let's go, let's start in FY 2019. The inflation rate was 1.81%. You asked the town to come up with 2.5%. In FY 2020, the inflation rate was 1.25%. You asked the town to come up with 2%. The projection inflation rate for FY 21 is 2.6, no, 2.26. You asked the town, the town came up with 3.2%. So as you can see, you know, we're growing at a rate higher than inflation during a pandemic. And. I don't think that's right. Now, the operational budget, I think, is fairly fiscally responsible. Although I do note that we've increased by eight administrators in nine years. One of those is special education, which is perfectly understandable, as we've left the region. But seven additional beyond that. The average salaries for administrators in our district are a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, which is a lot more than any of my staffers think. So I'll be proposing some motions in regards to your capital improvement funds. I don't know when the time will be for that, but I'll be making several motions. So that's it for now.
And just to point out again, most of those increases, we certainly appreciate the support that we get on the town side and that additional burden, some of those numbers put on the town due to that over two million dollar reduction that our district has seen. For the administrators, I know you're working off of numbers that are very in your current budget book. We've certainly added some new titles and rules, the responsibilities, you know, probably represents some shift in responsibilities to run a district. I do keep my eye on, you know, what other districts are arguing in areas certainly similar to our size. I do not believe that we are, if you will, administratively cop heavy. You mentioned a special ed, you know, within that administrative comp, in our budget, but not the athletic, directly included there. So there are some positions that.
I counted them.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Dr. Kenworthy, I'd like to just get clarification on a couple of the bands that were mentioned. I'm familiar with the town that can use the code relief money and how, you know, it's been stressed to us not to, try to take care of capital projects. When I review these S R two and S R three, you're looking at about, I can call it two point nine one, two point nine one. How? You've got two years to use that money?
Two years as of right now, I have been in this.
Okay, so on the S R two, let's just say, if you call it nine hundred thousand, you got four hundred and fifty for this current year before June? To use that money?
The next two school years, yes. Any funding that we receive for this year is reflected in that, those COVID ones. Can I already make sure that we spend any of the federal money in the years?
Right, so how, how, how do you envision that money being? Like that, because that four hundred and fifty thousand would clearly be infused into this budget, correct?
Well, it's not representative of anything, right, that I've.
Right.
You know, and so the concept, this is expected to be, you know, additional, you know, way not used budget you have to for capital projects. Yes, I mean, we, we will, as we did for this year, with any money that we received, either federal or state transfer for COVID, you know, we're going to have to, these allocations will be given to us, but we have to write a plan that then needs to be approved for how we're going to spend those funds within the parameters that they're expected to be spent for. So, okay, and for there's not a lot of details. We have started as much as we can writing our plan for S R two. You know, it really is about innovative things that we're not currently doing, right? That we can either springboard or some changes, you know, put in place due to COVID this year, you know, before and after the school day, right? Things that typically our operating budget hasn't traditionally supported. There will be personnel, right, so it's a core.
Right, well, I mean.
Programs.
So, but again, the key is to not add, not add to the operational expenses. This is like supplemental money, one-time money that you can use to, I would just, I envision it as, you know, infused into your current programs to improve the efficiency or things of that nature. I mean, so I'm just wondering if, if, you know, if that's an opportunity that, you know, that has been thought about from the operational side. Is there going to be some redundancy here where, you know, I don't, I mean, that's a lot of money. Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money to be infused into your program for next year. So, you know, what, what I, what happens if the money's not used? You know, or your plan, like, what?
So, you know, probably the closest example to this infusion of the money and, I don't know, what connection people had at the time, it was that back in the Obama administration, it was from overseas to the top, right? And use all sorts of additional money into the state school districts. And, you know, I was in another district at the time, but I give my any money that each district received and try to break a similar, similar type plans and the parameters of what is expected to be used for. There are, you know, there will be people, I'm sure, assigned at the state level. That's typically the way it trickles down, you know, from the federal level to modern days plans. What you don't spend at the end of the duration they give you, you get that, right? So you don't want to do that. That's why we were very careful, certainly, with any of the code. Of the money that we had talked about designated for COVID expenses this year, about five hundred thousand of that, like you see in federal spending. We made sure we spent that money first, if you will, before we started to dip into the money we were able to create surplus last year. So, so what we don't spend here would have to go back to the federal government. And that's, that's not anything that we would want to, we want to make sure that they're used to support these innovative programs.
It's a little different on our side because, you know, we treat it as a capital expense type. So we've got a laundry list of capital projects. So it's, you know, it's easy for us, it's easier for us to try and identify, you know, the opportunities. I was just curious if you had ideas about these opportunities, that that's all for, for how this money could be spent? Because I, I think, gee, you know, when you go back and you look at the, I think, the theme that has come up in past budget discussions is the, you know, you referenced it, the surplus funds. And, you know, it seems like over the past couple of years, there have been some, some pretty good surpluses. And, and you're still able to provide all the services. You know, the reflection is, as you mentioned, teacher of the year, students. And, you know, you've been able to do that and still come away with, with a surplus every year. So I'm just, you know, trying to, trying to look at the bigger picture here and say, is there any, is there any opportunities for some, you know, maybe some improved efficiency in the overall operations? Because you're still able to achieve what you're trying to do and still running the surplus. So that, that's kind of where the fiscal responsible part here comes in, these are tough decisions. And, you know, I'm not trying to diminish the budget request that's been presented. I'm just trying to say from a big picture, you know, the surpluses and these are questions that get asked. They come up during the audits and, you know, we, you know, we have that responsibility to make sure we're, we're doing everything as lean as we can.
So we understand that. You know, they, I think it's graphics there, but the huge focus with the intention of these, that's what's called learning loss. Right, so right now, in enforcement, we're probably not seeing reflections of that to the level that we may be hearing about in some other districts. But we also haven't received results of our state assessments. Those are, I'm going right now, see around, still make work of states. So we typically receive those usually prior to the next school year. That will also inform a lot of everybody who can decide the correct ones. All right, thank you.
Mr. President? A couple, couple of questions and also a piggyback onto Mr. Kelly's comments about the level of administrative positions that have been added. And one that really stuck out to me was last year's appointment of a new HR director, when we have an HR director in town. Being that ninety-five percent of the employees in town, in both the school and the town side, are contractually obligated and slotted in, I didn't see the need for that roughly a hundred and thirty thousand dollar expense. So that is a little concerning to me. I would also like to see us reduce the, the ask for the school department by eighty thousand dollars and move that SRO money back to the police department. And I will make that a motion if I need to at this point in time.
I would second that, Mr. Hamilton.
And moving that eighty thousand dollars would take the requested increase of the school department from ninety-three, one, eleven, excuse me, I'm sorry. I did the wrong number because I didn't take the forty-six. So we're going to be from eight seventy-six, three oh five, my thousand. So that would be the increase would be seven ninety-six, seven oh five. And I'd like to put that back into the SRO lineup within the police department budget, which would then take the local appropriation down to thirty-five million, three hundred sixty-seven thousand, one eighty-one. Assuming I did my calculations correct.
We have a motion in a second. Dr. Kenworthy, would you like to just respond?
Yeah, just to, you know, I certainly understand, you know, all of these questions, considering the SRO. Way to go with finding those positions, I would certainly defer to the, to the town and Mr. Rayner. I would, just hearing that request for the first time, just be a little bit concerned about. Right now, two SROs, a huge audit of our security needs. Last year, we actually need quite a bit of adjustments. That was on a basis of, you know, assuming that we do have, we need to have for the next foreseeable few years, the two SROs that we have. That's why, you know, this year, when Mr. Rayner approached us on that, letting us know that, you know, anybody that cops grant had expired, getting more and willing in our family, to make sure that we're paying for that second SRO. I was just wanting to make sure that we would be able to keep the two SROs are very integral to the state's security needs that have.
I'm not suggesting taking away the SROs. I'm just suggesting that the money stays on the town side of the budget. I, I fully support SROs and I wish we could have four of them. You could have one for each school.
That's true, and I get that. I would just, my concern in hearing that for the first time, just be, right now, if, if anybody asks, do we, do we support, you know, having SROs, I would say absolutely. And, you know, this is how we show that we support them, you know, we're more than willing to, you know, designate that forty thousand dollars for each of those positions. You know, a few years from now, again, as the other towns will decide that, you know, that those positions need to be eliminated.
Well, this allows for that funding to be within the police department and the police department to utilize the money as they see fit. But I don't see any appetite out by, for the entire council, if anybody disagrees. But I don't think there's anybody on the council nor anybody in the police department that wants to remove SROs from our school department.
And certainly we have those conversations. You know, the other point that I just made, Mr. Hamilton, I think, you know, the HR position. We did try, and we talked about shared services quite a bit already. We did try a few years ago, sharing the HR support on the town and school side. You know, it was, we've had a lot of success in some areas, you know, facilities, technology. That was an area in fault of particular people. It was just an area that we found didn't work as well for shared services. There are quite a few, you know, a lot of differences when it comes to contracts and policies and the way that things work. Most, most school departments have, in HR function, it's been met in some way, shape or form. You know, having, bringing on the HR director was a goal that the school department had had for a number of years. It's also been a recommendation that has come to us, you know, through some legal cases, right, that have helped over the years. It's, it's always a strong recommendation that school departments have in somebody who's trained in HR law as it applies on the school side. The other thing I would just mention there, I'll just take the opportunity, I, I did, we were not trying to keep this presentation as brief as possible. I didn't mention the fact that, you know, we absorbed within this past school year, you did not see any reflection of an increase that we're asking for. We talked with a number of administrators, Mr. Yuro. You know, we're happy to be able to still have him functioning as a director of finance. Prior to this year, he had been director of finance and administration. So he himself, based on, you know, personal, presence to train and ask for a reduction. So he's had a reduction in his role, a reduction in his work time and a reduction in his salary. So that has all been reflected. We have not asked for any, any increase that offset that.
We have an idea of surplus is looking like for this year?
So we don't have any hard pieces at this time. So April thirtieth is usually, like, last, last year was, you know, a different year for a lot of reasons. But typically, April thirtieth is kind of a deadline, if you will, that we ask all schools and departments to make purchase requests related to their budgets. So after that, we'll spend the next few weeks of May, you're trying to figure out what, what that surplus will be. And anticipate we will have a surplus again. And because, you know, the alternative that we always try to avoid would be running deficit. Our surplus typically, I know last year, it was at seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. That was about double where our surplus typically is, you know, based on the fact that once we shut schools down in March, we saw a reduction in a lot of expenses.
I, I appreciate the, the shooting for having a, a small surplus. Four, five, six hundred thousand dollars is a little much, you know, to me, somewhere around that hundred thousand dollar range would be a good number. So i- if, if we're looking at a standard surplus over the past four or five years of averaging four to five hundred thousand dollars, then we can safely cut your ass to three ninety-six instead of seven ninety-six, and you'd still end up with a hundred thousand dollar surplus, if that's the, the target we're looking for in terms of surpluses.
I guess to be able to, within our operations, all it takes is one unanticipated move in for an out-of-district special education placement or something. I think when you see, you know, surplus is reflected, again, we agree, right? Hundred thousand dollars, we agree, target number to aim for for a surplus. But, you know, a, a, a teacher or parent professional, somebody goes, goes out unanticipated at some point in time and you have positions filled with something, those kind of things are just unanticipated and there.
And, and I understand unanticipated expenses and some can be covered if they're a one-time expense with, you know, surplus that the, the school department carries. The, the concern that I have is that, you know, for years upon years and, you know, for one year, we worked collaboratively and were able to return some of the monies until Ride stepped in and said, you can't do that because it's against state law. That I'm getting to the point that I'd be more comfortable with the school department saying, hey, you know, we did have a, a transfer of a special needs student and it cost us an extra two hundred thousand dollars. And we, you know, we're going to be very close to not making our budget. We may need some help from the town. I would rather take, you know, three, four hundred thousand dollars and put it into a contingency fund on the town side. And then if, as similar to last year, if that money needed to be available for the school department, it could be moved over to the school department as opposed to essentially creating a larger jumping off point for increases for the next few years, which is what a eight hundred thousand dollar increase does.
Just again, I would point out that the best way for us to Uh, just again, I would point out that the the best way for us to return surplus funds, if you will, would be through uh capital projects. When we have an approved capital plan. Um, so as I mentioned, that that money that's sitting in capital reserve, if you will, is is higher than usually sits there. Because we haven't, um, you know, there are there are plenty of things we could be doing right now. Um, you know, there there are always things we could be doing to improve our our facilities, but we know that we don't have that approved. Uh, right, right, that plus of anything that we do, the town would not get that minimum thirty-five percent reimbursement back. That's that. Right, I believe has been looked at by attorneys on both of our sides. That is the best way for us to return, uh, you know. Anything near surplus funds to you, and that's in typical years, the way that we try to do it.
So the the, I I understand, is is this a ride regulation or is this state law that doesn't allow you to get the reimbursement because of not having a capital plan? That that's state law. Is state law? Yeah. All right. So if we were to request of our state legislatures a waiver since, uh, you know, COVID and other. Unanticipated events happened over the past year and a half that didn't allow us to get an approved plan? That we may be able to get that thirty-five percent for the roof of the high school? That certainly, yeah, if if that's an option and they're willing to to bring that up, that that would be great. I will, uh. I will reach out to our state representatives definitely and request that a a waiver option because of the events of the past eighteen months.
So we're not going to get the thirty-five percent on the four hundred sixty-nine thousand dollar roof project, right?
Well, a- as of right now, we're not. That's that's going to have to be an amendment to state law or some kind of a change to state law if we can get that. Because of, you know, COVID situations. So we're going to have to request that if it's state law that says you can't have it without an approved plan. If we can get some sort of a waiver, you know, some kind of, hate to call it a global waiver, but a waiver that, you know, could affect all school systems. That weren't of of the allowable or available to get. An approved ride plan over the past, I mean, I don't know if you know, uh, Mr. Yuro or uh Dr. Kenworthy, how many. School systems got an approved stage two plan over the past two years? Um, I I'm going to guess it's not the other thirty-eight. No, it 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 was probably less than maybe eight or so. All right. So having having a waiver put forth would be beneficial to all the towns. Certainly possible, and and I'll just mention too, um, just to follow up on Dr. Kenworthy's, um, some of the things he said. Um, we we did have a need for uh the replacement of the emergency generator at Portsmouth Middle School this year. It it finally broke to the point where it could not be repaired. Uh, we did apply uh to ride for an emergency approval of that that project because it was not in our capital plan. We did get that. We will use our capital surplus to fund that and the town will receive sixty thousand dollars in housing on that.
Apply for emergency prior to doing the roof?
Uh, yes, this this was a true emergency over the winter, if it will not be repaired. Did you use the same process to to fund the to go after the roof? Uh, I think was Mr. Kelly's question. Uh, the current regulations only allow one emergency request per year, uh, so that that would not work for us. So we can request it next in July because that'd be a new year. I I believe that's a twelve-month period, but I I'll certainly follow up and ask them. Appreciate that, and I I will take the legislative route.
All right, um, and so we did, we had a motion in a second to.
To move the eighty thousand dollars for the two SROs from the school department ask, which would take the school department's. Uh, increase or requested increase from eight seventy-six, three oh five to seven ninety-six, three oh five. Sorry, that was that was a bad writing, uh, Madam Clerk. Seven ninety-six, three oh five, which would be a total town approach appropriation for. From the town to the schools of thirty-five million, three hundred sixty-seven thousand, one hundred eighty-one dollars. Yeah, it was three oh five, not seven oh five.
Dr. Ryan?
Um, yeah, I just have a question. I mean, I'm, uh, is there an accounting benefit here by moving this. Pot of money from the school department to the police department? Does it simplify accounting? Because it sounds like we're appropriating the money. We're spending it anyway. So it's almost moot as to where it sits.
It's not necessarily moot. It 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 lessens the jumping off point for the school department for next year.
We're already paying on the police side, I believe we're paying uh.
Fifty-two thousand.
Fifty-two thousand for each each SRO. So now the, so each officer. With a, when you factor in all the uh benefits and everything, it's about a hundred thousand dollars per officer. Is that fair to say? Ninety thousand dollars.
Ninety-two.
Right, so so we're already, I mean, it's already split, so it it probably makes, it's probably a a cleaner thing to have it in with the police. And the SROs are clearly used at the, during, you know, as was, uh, we heard, they're at the schools, but then in the off time during the summer. They're, you know, they're they're providing us support, you know, to the to the police force, so.
Oh, that sounds reasonable.
Yeah, uh, I think that's a, you know, I think that's a a reasonable uh adjustment. Um. So we have a, I don't, were those numbers correct though, Mr. Reena? Um, the 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 thirty-five sounded wrong. We dropped it by eighty thousand. It was it was thirty-five, nine, sixteen. So it should be thirty-five, eight.
I'm I'm looking at the total town appropriation line item. That was thirty-five, four, four, seven, one eighty-one. And reducing that by eighty thousand dollars to thirty-five million, three sixty-seven, one eighty-one.
All right, okay, I was I was one line down. I was I was at the total town.
Well, you're looking at one.
I was at the the other total town.
Yes, well, that that would be adjusted down as well. But I think Mr. Kelly wants to speak on the next line, so I'll let him handle that one.
Hold on a second. Um, I just want to, Mr. Yuro, does that number. Match uh what you're tracking?
With the adjustment? I I, well, I think, um, Mr. Rena, did you ask for? Did you call the town appropriation thirty-five, nine, one, six, one eighty-one, or did you call it thirty-five, four, four, seven, one eighty-one without the capital?
Uh, it's it's labeled. If you look on page eighty-two of the budget.
Yep.
You'll see under town enforcement funding, there's town appropriation for school capital. The appropriation for school department and then total appropriation. So I think what. What I've heard is that we would subtract eighty thousand dollars from the town appropriation for school department. And that would change the total town appropriation, which would be the appropriation plus the capital, the thirty-five million, eight hundred thirty-six thousand, one hundred eighty-one dollars.
The total, right? I'm only working off of line three. At this point in time.
Yeah.
We haven't, we haven't discussed the capital as of yet.
Right, I I was on page eighty.
I'm on page eighty as well.
And the same with a, yeah, I understand where you're going with.
All right, good.
So we're working my way down from the top to the bottom. So we're just starting with reducing the. Operational, how about we call it that? The operational ask from eight seventy-six, three oh five to seven ninety-six, three oh five. That would be the operational ask. Not the capital ask. So, Mr. Hamilton, was your number thirty-five million, three sixty-seven, one eighty-one? Yes, sir. I I have the same number. Okay, good.
We had a motion in a second to remove the the two SROs. Uh, all those in favor?
Ms. Uji Fusa?
Aye.
Sabbath?
Aye.
Bunmer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Iger?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay. Did you? Have a comment?
Yeah. As we're ready.
I I don't see any, I'm just checking. I don't see any questions or comments, so uh, Lord is yours, Mr. Kelly.
Okay. Let me get the slide number. Can you, Parker, can you pull up the um. The surplus accounts slide? Well, I can continue. As you, as you'll see when the slide's presented, um. Remaining in the. COVID fund, which is last year's surplus, there is one hundred forty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars. Although it says additional expenses may be uh expended before June thirtieth. Um, in the rainy day fund, which is a. One point five percent of operational budget. So that grows annually if you're keeping it at one point five percent. So that's five hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-six dollars. Oh, that's important to keep where it is. And then in the projected amount remaining in the capital fund, there is six hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars. So my proposal is. That we reduce the school committee's capital improvement ask by four hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars. And then allocate it to. Mostly town capital improvement projects. If you want, I can go into the, oh, okay, so I'll just go with the whole way. Uh, one hundred thousand dollars to the DPW budget under maintenance general line item. And then through our CIP plan, uh, would be the Glenn Manor House, subterranean boathouse. Structural stabilization field bill clear cut. Uh, that's in our CIP for one hundred thirty thousand dollars. The Elmhurst parking lot lights, Elmhurst Park parking lot lights is in our capital improvement plan for thirty-four thousand, two hundred and seven dollars. Mount Hope Park improvements, fifteen thousand dollars. Island Park Playground Basketball Court, resurfacing six thousand dollars. Redwood Farms. Which is the Frank Carson Playground, uh, basketball courts and repairs to Bachi Court, six thousand, seven hundred dollars. Elmhurst Park. Uh, refurbishment of Blacktop into tennis court, pickleball court, dual use, fifty thousand dollars. The pump house, also known as town building number eleven, is fifty-six thousand, ninety-six dollars. And the remaining balance to be put into a capital improvement contingency equals seventy thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. The motion.
Okay.
A long one.
Okay. So you you're looking to reallocate about to take the, have the school pay their own four sixty-nine in capital?
Yep.
Out of their. Potential six forty-three that's currently in their capital.
Along with their rainy day fund and COVID money and their new surplus. And so I want that, so.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I will, I'm just trying to, I'm just, yeah.
I will second it for discussion. I was, I was muted, sorry.
Um, okay, so we had a second for discussion. I was just trying to make sure I was close enough here writing, writing that sound.
Can you read those numbers again slowly?
Sure, thanks. So with. Put one hundred thousand dollars to a maintenance general under the DPW operational budget. It would then place three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars into. Total increased purchase line of the tap town capital improvement budget. Subterranean boathouse, one hundred thirty thousand. Elmhurst Park parking lot lights, thirty-four thousand, two hundred and seven. Mount Hope Park project improvements, fifteen thousand. Island Park Playground Basketball Court, six thousand. Redwood Farms, Frank Carson Memorial Playground Basketball Court and repairs to Bachi Court, six thousand, seven hundred dollars. Elmhurst Park Tennis Courts dash Pickleball Court Dual Use, fifty thousand dollars. Town Building Eleven, fifty-six thousand, ninety-six dollars. And I came up with a balance when I did this of town uh capital improvement contingency of seven thousand, nine hundred ninety-seven dollars. One of those could be.
Mr. Kelly, you got these numbers from the Jacobs report?
I got some of them from the Jacobs report and some of, well, actually, I lifted them right out of this capital improvement plan that we have.
Yes.
Basketball courts and the pickleball court because those those numbers were not in here, but our sorely needed capital improvements. This one will keep.
I I'm good with all that except for maybe building eleven. I think I'd rather see that money utilized to further enhance Mount Hope Park and possibly fix the wall. Just my thought process. I I liked the hundred thousand dollars being utilized as a maintenance account line item in DPW. That could be put in there for a yearly um. It a yearly recurring fund that we have to utilize so that we don't get behind on deferred maintenance like we are now.
I missed part of that, you. I apologize.
You're, that's okay. The hundred, the hundred thousand dollars that you put in for the line item in the the DPW budget, I like the use of that so that we can. Not get so far behind it with deferred maintenance and get us into these capital projects that we're in now. And that could be a yearly line item that's that's permanently, and once it's in there, we can keep it in that DPW line item.
Mr. President, I have a few questions.
Okay, well, I'll, there's a, we all said, I. We also, you're, okay.
Right, so I just want to understand um better what the school department people were saying about how it was an advantage to the town to not. Reduce the budget but get the money back by having them invest in capital projects because they get a percentage back from the. State when they do that. Um. What percentage is that again, Mr. Kenworthy?
It's a minimum of thirty-five percent. Right now, there are some additional incentives, uh, you can get up to five percent if it's an improved health and safety project. You know, the the state has dangled up up to fifteen percent additional um. We're telling what what we're going to ultimately improve. Uh, but we know it's a minimum trust thirty-five percent. Uh, what I was referring to there was, um. You know, I've had a very difficult, our size, like, it is. Best suggested way for school departments to return any capital to any surplus funds. Back to the town is that that policy that I I referenced, right, that the the school made it a few years ago. One point five percent base fund, they, you know, everybody can understand importance of something like that for, uh, you know, uh, some some crazy anticipated. Uh, there, and but then directing any additional to that, to the capital surplus now. Um, and if we were working off of approved projects, you know, that thirty-five percent, anything that we spend there at a minimum. And if we were working off of approved projects, you know, that 35% of anything that we spend there at a minimum will back to the town. Just want to mention a few other things.
Could I just add, so the 35% reimbursement?
Don't forget to get it anyway.
Well, potentially, potentially if there's a waiver or we may, we may, it may still be in play. That money, the 35% reimbursement is not eligible if you use your own capital reserve fund.
No, I think we would just have to make sure it's, it's being used for an approved project or something that we get urgency fund.
Right, so the, so the, the money that's in the capital fund is, if that money were used, it would still be, if it's an approved plan, we'd still be eligible for that 35% reimbursement. So we're not losing out on the 35% if the school funds it out of their own cap.
True, yes, if it's, if it's eligible and approved, that's true.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that was, that part was clear. I think there was potentially a confusion about if the town pays it, it's 35% reimbursement. If the school pays it, it's not. If, if 35% reimbursement, as long as it's an eligible project, is in play.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So Dr. Kenworthy.
Sure, sure. If you go back a couple of slides, that summary. Sorry, the chart. Yes, that, that next one. So we get it, right, and we could, we could have certainly come into this process to make that we realize what's sitting there in our capital reserve account. We've talked about high in a typical year, right, that, you know, keep, keep some money there and then using it and, and ideally 35% and going back to the town is, is kind of the best way to do things. We certainly understand we could fund, you know, give fully those capital assets for next year from that surplus. As Mr. Bureau has pointed out, though, we have, every year, there's going to be capital requests, we have to make, we have a maintenance of effort that we have to be up with on the state side. So everyone's aware of this. I just want to make sure it doesn't get lost in this discussion. We, being as a school department, five buildings that are really town buildings. Yes, they're used for our educational purposes, four school buildings, the school administration building, those town buildings, right? So anything that we're talking about here on the capital side that goes into those buildings is being used for upkeep for towns. So again, there's always going to be capital needs. You know, just best practice is always going to be that maintenance of effort requirement. So just to point out, seeing those numbers you read, that fiscal year 19, many of us were around for that conversation. Pretty much of the same conversation, I'm sure at the time, right, ultimately, there was no capital request approval. We were asked to use, always on reserve capital, but I think it was Serena will tell you that following year in FY '20, now we clearly approved 600, a capital request of $604,100. So we, we need, you know, legitimate case in that year that, that those, you know, those are capital request needs that we had. And then the town had to then, you know, fund that approved request from a starting point of zero previous year. So again, I, I, it is certainly a figure perfect to do what, you know, with, with the committee approves. But we would not recommend, and that would be zero would be a good starting point for the town for, for next year for our capital.
I have taken that into account. That's why I, my motion is to use that for one time, mostly one time county capital improvement expenses so that that money can then be leveraged next year for school department capital improvement request as they come.
Just wanted to make sure I did those points.
Yeah, oh, understood. Any additional comments?
I don't believe so, Chris or Barbara Copeland.
Nope, I'm, I'm good.
Now, I, I see the desire of the town to put it toward town, we do have the, we do have the surplus there. I, I, I just feel, you know, I think honestly the town council should be jumping up and down with joy because we're part of it right now. Look at how it has contained expenses. How with each of the unions have played ball and they've only increased by 1%, which is not something we're seeing on the town side. When that's your all staff, they work incredibly hard. They had essential services this entire year, full in person with the kids. You know, and you look at our neighboring communities and you're seeing tittering coming in with like 4% plus asking of their town. Middletown, which is Newport, I, I just don't want end this discussion and I appreciate the green light shape. I think the school committee is a very, you know, keen on financial accountability. I think the district is very keen on transparency. But I, I really think Portsmouth want to take a moment and recognize what a deal they're getting for their tax dollars. And part of the reason why we keep getting hit in state aid is because the state puts the community and says you're not funding the schools to the extent that you're capable, right? So that $169,000 from their perspective is basically saying Portsmouth is capable of doing more. Again, I, I get the, the fragility, we get the pandemic, and I think you see in the budget presented. It is incredibly, incredibly disresponsible. And I think we owe the district, the staff, and everybody a huge round of applause for helping make it that way. And I, I just worry when I hear statements like it's not keeping up with the rate of inflation, that that totally misconstrues the bigger picture, that it totally neglects the revenue shortcuts, that it totally neglects all the cost savings that the district has found that has put Portsmouth in a really healthy position when it comes to school. So I would hope that the town council would take a moment to recognize that as well.
Thank you, Copeland, and, and I do acknowledge what you're saying. You know, hats off to the school side of things. We're doing an excellent job, you know, with our students. You know, we do have some of the best and brightest, you know, graduating. That's a testament to, to all the hard work. But I also, in all fairness, want to say that, you know, these, you know, this $80,000 adjustment to the operating budget is, is kind of a minimal.
I agree. You didn't hear me talk about that. It's, I feel like the context in which this discussion is being held isn't, you know, is really sort of looking for all the problems. And what in many ways will be out of doing here is celebrating this, right? I mean, I think Dr. Kenworthy was saying with the capital, look, we could spend the budget down to zero every single year and have no surplus. But that is not the thing to do. The fiscally responsible thing to do is meet the needs, put that surplus in a capital account because ultimately it's coming back to the town at 35%, right, at a minimum. So I just, you know, when we start talking about, oh, you know, we have a surplus, we have a $40 million budget. $100,000, $300,000 surplus is not that much. And it's far preferable than having us come in the middle of fiscal year to the town council and say, you guys have to come up with $200,000 for a special ed. You have to come up with $400,000 because of boiler defects or because of broken or because of January refreak. So, you know, this, this kind of, I, I, it's not micromanaging, but I think we need to look at the big picture and recognize the exceptional job that the district has done.
I, I, I don't disagree. I don't disagree.
I don't disagree. Oh, go ahead.
But I, I think what we're talking about here is, is there's a $643,000 sitting in the, sitting in the capital fund that isn't going to be used and it's only going to grow because you may have another surplus this year. It didn't grow last year because last year's $720,000 surplus was kind of set aside for, for the COVID expenses. And we had that, we did have that big discussion last year, and we also set aside some additional contingency money. And, you know, I, I think what we're, what we're seeing, though, is, and this is just my own observation, the surpluses are almost to the one and a half percent operating budget every year. They're very close. They're bordering over 1%. Because just last year, and I'm only going to say the last three years. Last year was, last year, last year was a little bit of an anomaly, but the year before was, was 484. The year before that was 553. So the, you know, these are, you know, you're ordering on over, over 1, you know, 1% of that operating cost. So I mean, that's, that's a lot of money every year that goes into the capital fund. And it's, again, like you mentioned, you could, you could pay this capital month, you could pay these improvements and still have $163,000 in, in, in the, in the bank, so to speak, in case it's needed.
Which, which is why you're not hearing any squawk about it, because I think it is, if you're going to do this, at least you're not taking it out of the budget. So you have to backfill the whole next year, which is a smart thing to do. But I would point out, if you look at, and anybody on the capital committee will tell you, you know, it's not as if we only have one roof that needs to be set, right? So, you know, there, there's a lot of things we can be doing with the schools to enhance the education experience of the children, to maintain the buildings so that we don't have to build new schools. And we'll probably, you know, we're, we're going to be looking at a bigger capital ask. So again, if it makes sense for you guys to do that this year, I just feel, you know, if only we're keeping the bigger picture in mind. We're all one town, which is.
Absolutely. We are, we are partners here.
I just want to, go ahead. I just want to say that I recognize that our school district is the crown jewel of our community. It is the heartbeat that makes sports a desirable community to live in, work in, you know, attend football games in. And, and I think the school district and the school committee and administration is doing a very good job. It's just, you have the capital improvement money sitting there. We could really use it this year to take some things off of our capital improvement list. It's going to be in the budget for you next year. I see a bond in the future that I will support. And you know, this is a, this is a good use of those funds. I understand that we have a plan. It's really like 135% because the town is not paying for it and we're getting 35% back. But the town did pay for the initial investment. Citizens paid for that.
These are town, town buildings.
And I, I understand that when, when they no longer are school buildings, they get transferred to the town in whatever condition they're in. So I understand that, and I thank you guys for all the hard work. All right.
I have a question, Mr. President. So Ms. Copeland, could you explain what you mean? I mean, I heard that the school funding formula this year not only lowered Portsmouth's state aid, it raised state aid to communities like Barrington. Wasn't it more than a million dollars? And I can be sympathetic if state aid is increased to a community like Central Falls. But are you saying that part of the reason a wealthy community like Barrington got over a million dollars in state aid when ours was cut has something to do with the amount of support that the town is giving? Or what explains that kind of financing beyond school population?
Mr. Bureau can explain this better than I. But the under, what is not, what is hurting Portsmouth now is not the implementation of the funding formula. That's dumb. It's the ongoing application of the formula that uses things like property values and assessment and the accountability to pay that then measures whether or not in this formula's eyes the town is paying what it can pay. And if it thinks it is, then, you know, it kicks in a little bit more, which is why Barrington and East Greenwich got more money this year. Like a million for Barrington and I can't remember East Greenwich with several hundred thousand. And then Portsmouth and I believe Little Compton were the two communities that were, that were more negatively affected by this. Again, I defer to Mr. Bureau on this.
Yeah, so i- in the funding formula, there, there are a couple levers. The largest one is, is what they call E-Wave, which is basically assessed value per student. And just to give you some numbers, Portsmouth has $2 million worth of assessed value per student. Barrington has 1.3 million and East Greenwich has 1.5. So those numbers work into the calculation along with things like free and reduced lunch, median income, and then quite frankly, the number of students. So Barrington has about 50% more students than, than Portsmouth does. But it really kind of boils down to the funding formula saying the town of Portsmouth has a lot of assessed value that it could be using to support education. And it calculates a number and says, okay, this is how much we'll give. You have to give the rest because you have the value to do that.
And so I would say just, you know, again, this is something I think we really need to get into with our state legislature. This isn't just a one-time hit. I mean, we, we literally thought last year that it would be the end of sort of the, the reduction in state aid. But, you know, as, and it would level off and maybe even hopefully go up, you know, with inflation or something. But as we see this year, it's $169,000 left. So that may mean next year, the town, we're going to be starting at a whole of maybe $169,000 again that will be coming to the town and saying, you know, even if we keep expenses at 1%, we're still at this $169,000.
Okay, but, but going back to the original question, which had to do with Mr. Kelly's motion, you were arguing that to reduce the surplus by over $450,000 would somehow also harm us in the state funding formula as it exists now because we're not contributing enough? Is that what you were saying? Or were you not tying the two together?
I, I don't believe, Mr. Bureau, correct me if I'm wrong, that capital funds are part of that calculation, I think.
Okay, that's.
Yes, you're, you're correct. They're not.
So that, that, cutting the operating budget would increase, you know, them saying you're not funding the school now.
Okay, okay, but the capital does not. Okay.
Capital, the, the town.
Okay, and then I have a question for Mr. Kelly. The various improvements to the parks and recreation facilities, have you run those by our Parks and Recreation Department or staff? And how, how were these chosen and prioritized like this? Because I'm a little concerned we're going to have a plan produced through the Open Space and Recreation Master Plan that might prioritize the needs differently than you have here. Not that I don't, you know, they sound fine, but if we're going to do a plan, it feels like we should, A, at least consult the staff and B, perhaps wait for an analysis of what the needs really are and prioritize them.
So I ran a couple of these by, a couple of these by town staff, but I was happy to just allocate the money into the town capital improvement plan if that's what you're more comfortable with and then, you know, divide it up later with, you know, with the detailed diligent study of town staff with the plan, that, that's fine with me.
I would, if I may, I would be more comfortable with that as well. I, I am supportive of the idea of putting the extra money into the capital improvement plans to, you know, Emily, I don't disagree with what you said, but we can say the same thing about the town facilities that we have a ginormous list of capital improvements that we need to work on. And in reinvesting in our town also benefits not just the children and students of our town, but all the residents of Portsmouth. So I would argue they're equally important. So I would be supportive of putting the extra funds in our capital improvement plan. I don't necessarily feel prepared to support the specific items that were listed. I think I'd like to vet those and, and prioritize to, to really identify which ones are going to have the most benefit for our community. So.
I think, Mr. Kelly.
I will revise my motion.
Before you do that, Mr. Kelly, I still, I'll go back to that $100,000 you want to put in as a line, a maintenance line item in the DPW budget. I think if we put that into DPW, then put 369 into the capital improvements, I think. I think having a baseline each year to have that $100,000 to do repairs around town as needed would stop us from doing these million, multimillion dollar repairs.
I would agree with that, yeah.
That's exactly what I was going to revise my motion to say. I move that we reallocate the $469,000 from the Portsmouth School Department Capital Improvement to Town Capital Improvement in the amount of 369,000, and then create a maintenance general line in the DPW budget of $100,000.
Second.
Is there, is there any? Okay, all right. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Cudine?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Sagyer?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
And can I make one editorial comment about, and this is not towards Ms. Copeland, because I think her, she's thinking about the entire process, but this is more directed at the state level, that towns that are being fiscally responsible are being penalized for being fiscally responsible is disgusting. And, and Suji Fu said the city of Central Falls is 100% state-funded in terms of their educational budget.
Okay.
All right, so. So we need a provisional approval of the school department budget, which is the 43,604,345 minus the 549,000. Did I do that right?
Yep. How do you say? So it's 33,55,345 for the total restricted unrestricted budget.
Oh, provisionally, I would make a motion to provisionally approve the school department's total budget for the fiscal year 2022 at 43,55,345.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Mr. Jacobus?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Rudmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Sagyer?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Moving on to civic support. Yep, this is humor, really. I've lost track of your motion. The motion, so the last motion that passed, it was $100,000.
Maintenance general line on a DPW budget and $369,000 to the Town Capital Improvement Plan.
You're creating a new blind item in the DPW budget that is townwide maintenance for buildings and grounds.
We, we already have a line there, so I would suggest we just add the $100,000 there.
There you go. Doesn't need, we need to spend it every year, but it's there if we need it.
Oh, Brian? Yeah.
Oh, just like the, thank the town council for their support.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if we can go to the budget page 79, if you're not already there. Page 79?
Page 79, everybody.
Okay. Yes. So here at page 79 of the proposed budget, you can see the summary of proposed civic support expenditures for fiscal year '22, which were initially reviewed by the council on February 22nd. The Prudence Island Volunteer Fire Department, I'll note, has requested $199,904 in support. They have also additionally requested $18,750 to fund a required match for a pending fire apparatus grants application. That amount has been added to the proposed capital improvement plan for fiscal year '22. So I therefore reduce the proposed civic support to 2% over last year to $188,000. You can also see that the Portsmouth Art Guild has requested civic support in the amount of $10,000. This was a large request for an organization not normally supported by the council. There was no decision made at the February 22nd meeting, and so I have, I have therefore not proposed any funding for that line for '22. Additionally, you'll see that the East Bay Community Action Program submitted a civic support request for $5,000. That support request arrived after the due date, and we therefore did not discuss that request at the February 22nd meeting. So I have not proposed any funding for FY '22. We'll also note that funding for the Equidnic Island Planning Commission has been moved from the Planning Department budget to civic support, and is here listed at $18,000. Overall, civic support is proposed to rise by 3.18% before the addition of the anticipated State Library date, which is a pass-through to the Portsmouth Public Library. So in total, I propose $1,58,252 for civic support, for which we request town council provisional approval. So moved.
Sam, can you see that?
So moved, seconded, sorry.
Okay. We'll wait, so I have a motion in a second. We do have one comment, or hand up. So before we vote, let me just, uh, press. Greet, Nancy Greet?
Nancy Greet, do you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Uh, 1/10th there, drive. Thank you, Mr. Rayner, for moving AIPC to civic support. But I still do not understand and have never gotten a reasonable explanation as to why you would support this organization. They have done nothing for the town of Portsmouth in years. They, we've been told about the million-dollar grant that they received in 2016 to do six to 10 BMPs, another $300,000 for DEM to do two to four. And in the five years since, have done two, both in Middletown, one on a private HOA, whose president also happened to be the chair of the board of AIPC when it was chosen. And in the last two years, they've also borrowed $300,000 from the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank. Why does a nonprofit borrow money? They can't pay their bills. I, 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 I just don't understand that the, the town council supports this organization, and I'm looking for reasonable explanation. Also, if you look at that line, under actual, you have for fiscal year 2020, $15,619. And if you go back to page 52, when it was under planning, you have fiscal year 2020, actual is 18,000. I'd like an answer to that one, too. Thank you.
With respect to the discrepancy between the two actuals, thank you for pointing that out, and we'll get an answer to you by tomorrow. I don't think it's that funny, but we'll answer the question for you. So we have, um, thank you for your comments, Mrs. Greet. We have a motion in a second to provisionally approve the, the budget in the amount of $1,58,252. All those in favor?
Mr. Jacobus?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Rudmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Sagyer?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. So, if we'll go to page 83 of the proposed budget, to discuss capital. Okay. So we're going to break because of the last motion regarding the movement of capital from school to this. There'll be two motions that we'll ask for. So the very first will be the, I'll discuss the capital improvement plan that's laid out here. And as I highlighted last night, these purchases will be made not from the general fund, but in a, in a way that I'll describe here again, once I've gone through this. So on page 83, and then first a note about the headings there. The American Rescue Plan, those are placeholders, as I described last night. Those are projects which I bounced off the federal delegation, and they agreed that these would be appropriate American Rescue Plan projects. They're sitting there waiting for Department of Treasury guidance. So we'll just discuss the green column there, the purchase, which again is via non-general funds. So, beginning with Town Hall, we're proposing the continuation of the furniture and office upgrades, a renovation and repair of the Town Hall vinyl tile, vinyl tile floor, and a flat roof repair for a total of $73,000. The Planning Department, we're proposing to continue the memorial bench program, so we allocated $2,500 for that project. In the recreation section, we're proposing $202,000 for the renovation of the bathhouse. And then renovations to Glen Park Buildings, Glen Park Pavilion Picnic Table Purchase, two. Glen Park Sinks, the replacement of the sinks at the Glen Park Facility. And then $146,000 for playground equipment and repairs. So for a total of CIP, total CIP for recreation of $394,910. Next page, please. Here we see the capital improvement proposals for DPW acquired. In DPW, we're proposing a purchase of a new arm mower and a three-quarter ton truck. We're proposing a new siding and a paint, new paint for the DPW of Prudence Island. We're proposing roof work and coupla work at Glen Stables. We're proposing a repair to the Glen Manor pedestrian bridge, that's the Glen Manor House pedestrian bridge to the pier that is located there. We're proposing funding for a complete street study in anticipation of a complete street fitness. And we're proposing a continuation of the repairs and renovation of the Linden Lane stone walls. For the Fire Department, we're proposing the replacement of the Boston Whaler rescue boat, the purchase of new fire hoes, the purchase of a second lead monitor, a grant match for a radio replacement program. And as I just talked about in the CIP, or the civic support discussion, here is the grant match for the Prudence Island Volunteer Fire Department application for a grant for a new fire apparatus. And then repair of the fire station roof, for a total, Fire Department CIP list of $855,979. Go to the next page, please. For the Police Department, we're proposing three new vehicles, and then outfitting the mechanic's garage with mechanics tools for a total of $183,532. So this would total, as I outlined last night in the brief, $1,426,823. So as reported, just to reiterate what we said yesterday, as reported in the audit, we have an FY '20 surplus of $698,000. This would normally be swept into the fund balance, which we refer to as the rainy day fund. We also have $263,000 in our COVID emergency fund, and about $200,000 in the FY '21 contingency fund. Additionally, we have received $814,000 in municipal COVID response funds from the state. So that total is 197, I'm sorry, $1,977,202. Half of the FY '20 surplus, $349,000, has already been applied to the FY '12, '13 warrant deficit. So from the remainder, I'll ask for provisional approval to apply $1,426,823 to this CIP plan. 51,000, 51,297,000 would remain in the contingency fund. And then $150,000 will be applied to the fund balance. So, Mr. President, we are asking for town council provisional approval of $1,426,823 for the FY '22 capital improvement plan. And on top of that, we're requesting the provisional approval of the $100,000 that will be captured from the school capital fund to be applied to a capital improvement contingency line.
No, 169,000.
Oh, did I get that reversed? You got that? So 369,000, that's right, the 100,000 was DPW. $369,000 to be applied to a new line in the capital improvement plan to be labeled contingency, CIP contingency, and that would obviously be coming out of the general.
I would move that with a quick question, Mr. Rayner. The Police Department just received a, which they worked very hard for, but a DUI car, a car from the state? About three, four weeks ago?
Right, that, that was, the announcement was made, and the money was received earlier. But that was when the announcement came out. They wanted to do a joint announcement for all accounts. We had already received that car last fiscal year.
Okay, so that, that wouldn't fall into being able to replace one of those three cars? That it, the vehicles they're looking for now? Okay.
I got a quick question. Is this a fire station, is this the full replacement of the fire station roof, part of the roof, or up there?
Uh, this is. Uh, this is the complete repair of the section over the living and office quarters, not the area over the apparatus garage.
So full new rubber membrane, flat roof?
Uh, I don't recall if it's flat or not, but I do know it's got a lot of molds in it.
It's flat.
Yeah.
Okay, that is, it's fine then.
Okay, we had a motion, if you could, we have-
Second.
Provisional approval, all those in favor?
Ms. Yipusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Rudmeyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, so, if we go now to page thirty-two of the budget.
I'm sorry, part of the, did, did you need us to provisionally approve the seven hundred and forty-four?
You need to, you're correct, you need to provisionally approve the, uh, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, uh, to be applied to a, uh, CIP contingency.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Yipusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Rudmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
What about the American Rescue Funds? Do we have the-
We don't, no, we haven't received those ones.
Okay.
So we moved it. Yeah, we go to page thirty-two.
So, yeah. Do we need to have, make a total approval of the capital improvement plan of one million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three, provisionally?
You can do that, I mean, you, you provisionally approved both sections, so-
Yep.
Actually, it's already approved.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, beginning on page thirty-two and running through page thirty-six, you can see the summary of proposed expenditures. On page thirty-six, it's like this right there. At the bottom of page thirty-six, you can see that the overall expenditures are proposed to increase three point eight-two percent to sixty-nine million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. If we factor out the SAFER grant, we get a truer reflection of the increase, uh, at two point seven-four percent. If you remember the SAFER grant, we're getting an equal amount of revenue for an equal amount of expenditure for the eight firefighters, and that grant lasts for three years. So tonight, we'll, we'll, uh, for the rest of the evening, we will focus on public safety and public works. So if we go to page fifty-seven, we'll start with the police budget. Here you can see the summary of proposed expenditures for the Police Department, and we'll begin with the salaries. We are at full strength for lieutenants and sergeants. In this budget, there appears to be a substantial increase in police officer salaries. This is due to the fact that the union voted down incorporation of the corporal rank. We anticipated this would pass during the contract discussions last year, and we budgeted for it. That did not pass, uh, the union vote, so we have eliminated that line in this budget and returned the salaries to the patrol officer line. I won't discuss the SRO grant. Uh, other judges say that the SRO grant is expired, and the condition of that grant was that the second SRO position be retained on full duty for one year following the end of the grant, and that period has been met. There's no net, there's no need to change the police budget because of the way the accounting works. We, we, the money was given to the school in their appropriation and then brought back in as revenue. So we'll zero out that. Tomorrow night, I'll have you re-approved the revenue for other without the eighty thousand dollars in it, and you've approved the expenditure on the, on the school side, so, uh, for town appropriation, so that zeros itself out. If we go to page fifty-eight, uh, we have the police expenditures for benefits, and in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement, police members in the defined contribution plan have been enrolled, enrolled in the state municipal employee retirement system. Increase in the defined benefit cost is attributed to low anticipated pension investment returns. The finance director and the pension committee have taken steps to address the performance of that fund. Page fifty-nine, we see the operations of the Police Department laid out. Operations expenses are proposed to remain relatively flat with the exception of the police academy expenses and school costs. Delay entering any new officers to the academy until fiscal year twenty-three. Emergency radio line increases this year in accordance with our Motorola contract. This is due to be the last year of the increase, and that line is expected to drop to fourteen thousand dollars next year. Additionally, fuel costs are expected to rise by over ten percent in the next fiscal year, and we've attempted to capture that in this budget. So if we go to the last page, page sixty of the police budget. Overall, we protect a five point eight-four percent increase in the police expenditures. We are asking for provisional approval of seven million, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars for the police budget.
So moved with one quick question. Um, when was the last time we went out for bid on our, uh, diesel and gasoline contracts?
Uh, right now, we're on the state, uh, the state contract.
Okay.
Uh, and I think that was just renewed.
Right, I, I would just suggest that we look on our own because sometimes state contracts aren't all what they're cracked up to be.
We have a motion, you, you, we have a second.
Second.
And a second before we vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, Larry Fitzmaurice, fifty Kristen Court. I want to speak to the overall pension plan. Uh, it's on a different page, and I chose this one because I'm not sure we're ever gonna get to page one oh eight. But, uh, I'll leave that to your judgment, Mr. President. Uh, either speak to the overall pension plan here or at some other time in the presentation.
And should plan, well, we don't, we're not part of it. Yeah, probably, I introduce this, the pension is broken out into each apartment, so-
That's correct.
Question would probably be a good way to bring it up. Yeah. What's your, uh, question, Mr. Fitzmaurice? Comment?
Um, yes, I have a question, and, and the data is on page one oh eight. Is a collection of the pension issue associated with the overall plan. Thank you. And, uh, you will note that, I want to begin with the pension asset and liability line at the top of this page, one oh eight. And you will note that, um, there are full market value, which I assume that's what FMV stands for, is the first line. And that's the full market value of the pension plan's investment body. The other one is the liability, outstanding total liability of the town. That doesn't mean unfunded liability, that means a total cost as projected by the actuarial tables. So, could, it's some of these, uh, numbers. The FY-2020 is the one I'll speak to. The numbers that we have before us is the sixty million dollar one you see in this, uh, page one oh eight. We compared it to the audit completed, um, um, in the, in the first part of this year, we, we had the presentation. That audit number shows the full market value under a slightly different name as fifty-five point seven million dollars. So, we have looked back through up to twenty seventeen, and there is some variances in there. Um, in here, if you look down at line number four, for the percent funded line on page one oh eight, you see fifty-three point three-six percent funded. The audit reported forty-nine point five-two percent, uh, funded. And so, of course, there's a difference in this bar graph because the bar graph uses the data above it, of course. And, so that's, in, in the essence, that's our concern. You see some, uh, again, if you, let me see, one oh eight, go down one more page. Two, nine, thank you. You will see that, uh, this, um, presentation by Siegel is using the data from the bar, from the data fields above. And it starts into the projection of what is required in, uh, actuarially, uh, yeah, what's, the old term is the R, any rate. And in any case, that thing, if you go down one more page, you will see a spreadsheet which, which I like, by the way, like it very much. It projects the necessary payments. If you look to column number four, the actuarial determined each year to keep this plan afloat. And, but you'll note that it's, if I go over to column number ten, the total unfunded liability is listed as fifty-two million. And not, I'm sorry, um, gotten in the wrong column here, is sixty million, actual value of assets. So we're concerned about, if you start into this table, which projects the necessary payments over a number of years with the wrong number, then all of the projections, including the one for the current proposed fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, are likely to be different than is projected. So, we don't know why that is, or whether there's something we don't see here. But we would like to know why the numbers are different. Different from this budget, uh, compared to the audit. Does that mean, does it need to repeat anything?
No, we're, we're just, uh, trying to, we're looking into it. Well, on page one away, where you see the unfunded liability of fifty-two million, four hundred and sixty-one thousand, that's the same number of, of page one-ten. It's also the same as the number of unfunded liability of page one oh nine. So, is the question more-
We do, and, we do understand that, but it doesn't agree with audit.
I think it's more about comparing it to-
Yeah, and I know you don't have the audit before you, so it's, it's not quite a fair, um- Do this and-
I mean, that's a good question, we'll get the answer to it. I would anticipate that it was probably the time when those numbers were full. Uh, I do know that the, the performance of the fund was rather abysmal, and then towards the last quarter, it did pick up quite a bit, so there may be a discrepancy between the timing of the pulling of those numbers. But, uh, it's a good question, and you deserve an answer to it, and we'll, we'll try to find out.
All right, for information, the Town Audit page we use is page one-two-six.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzmaurice. Okay, so, we can go back to the, uh, police budget. We had a motion and a second. What was, we are at page sixteen? Sixteen, uh, of this, uh, seven million, one sixty-eight, four seventy-one?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Ms. Yipusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Rudmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan? Dr. Ryan?
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Uh, to fire. So, uh, if we move to page sixty-one, we'll, sorry, to the Prudence Island Public Safety Officer. Follow, Mr. Rayner. We can fire if you'd like. Um, follow, sir. Okay, so, uh, here on page sixty-one, the Prudence Island Safety Officer budget is proposed to remain relatively flat except for fuel costs and contractually mandated increased pay and benefits. We therefore project a two point three-six percent increase in the public, in the Prudence Island Public Safety Officer budget and ask for provisional approval of eleven thousand, I'm sorry, one hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars for Prudence Island Public Safety Officer expenditures.
So moved. Second.
All, all those in favor?
Ms. Yipusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Rudmeyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly? Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, if we go to the next page, page sixty-two, we have the animal control officer, so the same things that apply to the public safety, the, the public safety officer apply here. Um, the budget is projected to slightly increase by two thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and we ask for provisional approval of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars for the animal control officer budget.
So moved.
Two pages. We have a second, second. All those in favor?
Ms. Yipusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Rudmeyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, so, if we go to page sixty-four, here we see the Hovermaster budget. Proposed slight increases for fuel, fully maintenance, and a small uniform stipend. Otherwise, the Hovermaster budget, budget is also relatively flat. Budget is proposed to increase by five thousand dollars, and we ask for provisional approval of one hundred and nine thousand dollars, one hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars for the Hovermaster budget. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Yipusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Rudmeyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Now, if we go to page sixty-five, I will discuss the fire. So in this first page, you see salaries. The Fire Department is due a two percent pay raise next fiscal year, and they've kept their overall overtime budget relatively stable. So you see, uh, only a two point one-eight percent increase in their salaries. But on the next page, page sixty-six, most of the firefighters formally, uh, in the defined contribution plan have transitioned to the state and municipal employee retirement system. As you saw in the police budget, the increase in the defined benefit cost is attributed to low anticipated pension investment returns. Go to the next page, please. The next page outlines their proposed operations expenditures. And here, the biggest drivers in the operations budget are due to the increased costs associated with fuel, vehicle maintenance, and a substantial increase in the force and repair and water district's hydrogen inspection, hydrant inspection fees. vehicle maintenance, and a substantial increase in the Portsmouth water district's hydrogen inspection, hydrant inspection fees. Overall, the proposed budget is projected to increase by seven-point-zero-four percent. We ask for provisional approval of seven million, four hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars for the fire budget.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jupusa?
Aye.
Zabbett?
Aye.
Ms. Budamire?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Doctor Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye.
Page, page sixty-eight. This is the new section of the budget. It'll be here for the next few years called Safer Grand Fires. These are the eight firefighters that have been hired, uh, via the federal safety grant. This section of the budget is offset by income from the grant, which we discussed last night, and fire department revenue. So we therefore ask for provisional approval of seven hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars for the Safer Grand Fires fiscal year twenty-two budget.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jupusa?
Aye.
Zabbett?
Aye.
Budamire? Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Doctor Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Go to page sixty-nine. Have the emergency management, uh, budget. Other than a two percent pay raise, we are proposing a four thousand dollar increase in the emergency management budget to fund a new computer and telecommunications capability to supervise and, uh, guards internet. We ask for provision, for provisional approval of thirteen thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars for the emergency management budget.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jupusa?
Aye.
Zabbett?
Aye.
Budamire? Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Doctor Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
So if we go to page seventy, uh, we'll see that the, uh, department public works budget starts there. Page seventy, there are, there are salaries are outlined. We are projecting a two percent increase and two, uh, DPW salaries in the next fiscal year. And additionally, we will suspend the summer hire program for next fiscal year. We'll go to the next page, page seventy-one. The drive, here we see benefits, and the driver behind the increase in DPW benefits is the increase in healthcare costs and more people signing on for family coverage. Again, the increase in the defined benefit lines attributed to the performance of the pension investment fund. Go to the next page, page seventy-two. Page seventy-two and seventy-three outline the operations for the DPW. The exception of utility and fuel costs, there are no significant increases in the operations budget, uh, with the exception of the hundred thousand dollars that we are adding to the, um, maintenance line. That maintenance line, um, if you go, it's about two-thirds of the way down, you'll see maintenance building. And that's generally what we call our townwide buildings and grounds fund. We add it to that, uh, that one. And if we go to page seventy-three, you'll see that the overall DPW budget is projected to increase by, uh, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So, uh, we are asking for provisional approval of the DPW budget, the amount of three million, fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars. So moved.
Uh, the second, second for a question. You don't want to add in the, uh, snow removal and everything else to get to a total, grand total DPW budget of four million, one hundred and seventeen thousand, one oh eight?
Oh, we do. I was asked for provisional approval of snow budget and road improvement budget, and then, uh, you'd have your grand goal.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, provisional approval on three million, six thousand, seven forty-four. All those in favor?
Ms. Jupusa?
Aye.
Ms. Zabbett?
Aye.
Ms. Budamire?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Doctor Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
For the next page. Here we are, outline the snow removal and road improvement budget. For snow removal, there is fifteen thousand dollars left over in the current snow removal budget and about one hundred and seven thousand dollars in the reserve fund. Contracting services for snow removal will increase by nine thousand, six hundred dollars next year. Other than that increase, we kept the rest of the snow removal budget level funded. We ask for provisional approval of one hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars for the snow removal budget.
So moved.
So moved, second.
Hey, Mr. Rayner, can I just ask a favor? Uh, perhaps next year or at some point, can you just stick that reserve amount on this page?
Uh, we can do that before we publish it. Yes, we'll get it in there.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor?
Ms. Jupusa?
Aye.
Ms. Zabbett?
Aye.
Mr. Budamire?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Doctor Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Passes seven to zero.
So towards the bottom of the page, uh, for road improvements, we are proposing a fifty thousand dollar increase in this budget, which represents a six-point-zero-six percent increase in this line. We ask for provisional approval of eight hundred and five thousand dollars for the road improvement budget. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jupusa?
Aye.
Ms. Zabbett?
Aye.
Mr. Budamire?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Doctor Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
So grand total DPW budget is four million, one hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and eight dollars, which is now been provisionally approved. If we go to the next page, we have the prudent asylum transfer station. We're proposing that we maintain funding for the additional person to cover, uh, the station when the current guard is unavailable due to time off of sickness. Therefore, the budget is level funded, and we, we are asking for provisional approval of one hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars for prudent asylum transfer station. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jupusa?
Aye.
Zabbett?
Aye.
Mr. Budamire?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Doctor Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
The president, that's what we scheduled for tonight. Certainly keep going, uh, or we can cover the rest of the expenditures tomorrow.
What did we advertise that we were going to cover tonight?
We left it open. We advertised it as just budget, 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 so that we didn't fall into the, the predicament we were in last year, where we had to come in and approve both.
How many do we, how many sections do we have left?
Uh, the rest of the departments and the enterprise.
And our twelve?
Yeah.
I mean, there, there's some basic ones that we can get through pretty quick, like the town council budget. That doesn't change every year. But.
We do a few, uh, questions there. So if we go to page thirty-seven.
Or we could quit and call it a night. I don't care either way.
Uh, you go to the door.
If, if this saves us a few minutes tomorrow night and saves us from having to be here on Thursday, I'm all for going a few, a little longer.
All right, so, so we can go for a few, uh, a little bit longer. So on page thirty-seven, uh, we have the, uh, town council, uh, budget. Uh, for this year, we've zeroed out the town conti, council contingency line, as we feel this is redundant now that we have an established town. Annual town council contribution to the Portsmouth Education Foundation, and the post-prom committee is the main thing. Overall, town council budget is reduced by four-point-four percent. We are asking for provisional approval of ten thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars for town council budget.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hang on a second. You have a hand up. And it, is that a dog barking?
Uh, here, uh, it looks.
Yes, I, um, Nancy Greep, one tenth there drive. I have a question. Um, maybe a favor, since Mr., uh, Hamilton asked for one. I believe that, uh, there are two wonderful things, the post-prom and the Portsmouth Education Foundation money, but shouldn't they be under civic support?
There's nothing that would prevent that, those two, uh, historically come to you for your approval. And there was a motion made in the past that we, uh, maintained, uh, the post-prom. It was, it was one of the two, put it in town council, but it doesn't.
It was the post-prom because for three or four years in a row, we gave the money to the, to the seniors, but never had it in the budget. So we always took it out of our contingency. So we moved our contingency and called it a post-prom light item. So it was, it came from the county, the county council contingencies budget. That's why I kind of ended up there. I mean, it's six of one or half dozen of the other. It's still fifteen hundred dollars of town money going to support the kids to have a safe prom.
Right. And we wouldn't want them. Right. I, I think.
I, I don't think we need to change it this year.
Yeah, we can discuss it and we can make that change for the next one.
Yeah, I think enough numbers have moved around this year.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second?
Yes.
Uh, all those in favor?
Ms. Jupusa?
Aye.
Zabbett?
Aye.
Budamire?
Hi, sorry.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Doctor Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll go to page thirty-eight. Here we see the town administrator budget. Changes here are due mostly to contractual obligations and the removal of the copier line from this budget. The copier line has been combined and added to the copier line in the finance budget. Overall, this budget is reduced by one-point-nine-one percent. We are asking for provisional approval of three hundred and seven hundred and ninety-six dollars for the town administrator department.
So moved. Second.
Uh, what was the stipend at the salaries?
Uh, that was, uh, the, for completion of the three-year contract.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
Okay. So we have the motion and a second. All those in favor?
Ms. Jupusa?
Aye.
Ms. Zabbett?
Aye.
Mr. Budamire?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Doctor Ryan? Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Go to page thirty-nine. We have the town clerk budget. There's salaries. They, uh, that we have the assistant town clerk position. In accordance with a pending memo, memorandum of agreement with the PMEA union, three clerks, townwide, will be promoted to a level above the current secret position. Police records clerk, assistant town clerk, and the senior finance clerk. And the HR assistant, line payroll clerk, will be removed from the union. The promotion of the three clerks will be phased in over three years. The removal of the HR clerk from the union and her promotion will be immediate. Additionally, open position, which was advertised last year, was bid on by an in-house employee in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement. In accordance with that union contract, a clerk from the tax office assumed the open position in the town clerk office. Because this is a vested employee with longevity, the salary and benefit budgeted for the town clerk increases by more than expected. But the tax office salary and benefit budget will increase accordingly. So it looks like it jumped up a lot higher than it really does. We'll watch, we'll prepare what happens to the other departments. Now, if we go to page forty, operations budget for the town clerk is level funded, with the exception of those lines associated with property transfers. The Portsmouth housing market is extremely active right now. We are budgeting accordingly. So overall, proposed town clerk budget is projected to increase by twenty-nine, ninety-nine percent. Again, due mostly to the transfer of the clerk from the tax office to the clerk office. And we ask for provisional approval of four hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars for clerk expenditures.
So moved.
Second.
David?
Ms. Jupusa?
Aye.
Ms. Zabbett?
Aye.
Mr. Budamire?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Doctor Ryan? Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Go to page forty-one. Now, pages forty-one and forty-two, we have the canvassing budget. The proposed canvassing budget is reflective of, of anticipated decreases in expenditures due to this being a non-major election year. We have, however, maintained enough of the budget line to cover voter referendum for a possible non-rescription in November. Additionally, redistricting begin in the spring of fiscal year twenty-two and continue in the fiscal year twenty-three. You'll see that in page forty-two. Information from the twenty-twenty census to evaluate and new precinct lines are determined by the Rhode Island General Assembly. That's done in twenty-twelve and will require an RFP for new district maps and voter notifications prior to the twenty-twenty-two election. Overall, there is a budget decrease of three-point-one-four percent. We ask for provisional approval of two hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars for the canvassing budget.
So moved. Second.
David?
Ms. Jupusa?
Aye.
Ms. Zabbett?
Aye.
Mr. Budamire?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Doctor Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Aguirre?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Now, if we move to page forty-three, here begins the finance, uh, budget. In the salary line, you'll see a movement. This reflects the movement of a clerk from the tax office to the town clerk office. But let me start that over. The movement of a clerk from the tax office to the town clerk office created a vacancy in the tax office. After consulting with the tax assessor and finance director, we have decided to move the person hired to fill the vacant position in the tax office permanently to the finance office. Increase in the finance salary and benefits budget is reflective of this. Vacancy in the tax office has been closed and will not be filled. Vacancy in the tax office has been closed and will not be filled. Senior clerk listed here is the third of the three PMEA positions to be promoted to a level above the current secret rating. The changes in the benefits budget are reflective of the change in personnel and the benefits they have elected to receive. We go to page forty-four. As discussed previously, the copier line has been moved from the town administrator budget to the finance budget. There is an increase in telephone charges due to a combination of telecommunications expenditures that were previously split between the finance and IT department. We have combined them now in one line in the finance budget. Overall, the proposed finance expenditures are projected to provide thirteen-point-two-six percent due mostly to the movement of a clerk out of the tax office and into the finance office. And we ask for provisional approval of nine-hundred sixteen thousand two-hundred and thirty-seven dollars for the finance budget. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Budmeyer? Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Dragon?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Now we get to page five. And we start, on page forty-five and forty, I'm sorry, forty-five and forty-six, we have the HR budget. In the salary section, you'll see that the HR assistant's line payroll clerk listed here. That is the position that is now eliminated from the PMEA Union, and that position will not be phased in over three years, but will be made effective in fiscal year twenty-two. Page forty-six. We have accounted for three anticipated or possible retirements in fiscal year twenty-two and increased contributions to the pension and OEPF funds due to the performance of the investments over the last year. Overall, we project a three-point-seven-seven percent increase in HR expenditures and ask for provisional approval of two-million two-hundred seventeen thousand eight-hundred and seventy-three dollars.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Budmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
And Ms. Dragon?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Page forty-seven. Here we have the legal budget. Overall, we are expecting a decrease in legal fees due mostly to the fact that we are not in any labor negotiations. However, we are maintaining a reserve for a possible tax assessment case that will work its way through the legal channels next fiscal year. This budget is projected to decrease two-point-two percent, and we are asking for provisional approval of hundred ninety-nine thousand six hundred dollars for legal expenditures.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Budmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Dragon?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
On page forty-eight. We see the information technology budget. This budget accounts for our fiber internet service, our internet security costs, software licensing, domain name costs, website hosting service, video streaming costs, management of onsite, onsite servers, and our financial software installation and our IT control. This budget is projected to decrease four-point-two-three percent. We are asking provisional approval of two-hundred six thousand five-hundred and two-three dollars for IT expenditures. So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Budmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Dragon?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Move to page forty-nine. See the beginning of the tax division budget. Here we see that the salaries and benefits line lines reflect the movement of a clerk from the tax office to the clerk's office and finance office that hold daily janitors. And you'll see the reduction in salaries and benefits in both areas, fifty-point-nine-nine percent in salaries and ten-point-eight ten-point-eight percent overall. Go to the next page. Fifty, in the operations, the budget, the tax office operations accounts for, accounts for an increase in collection fees. Additionally, we anticipate fifty thousand dollars in expenses for the next statistical reevaluation. Budgeted half this year and will budget remainder in fiscal, fiscal year twenty-three. Overall, the tax division budget is projected to decrease by seven-point-nine-four percent. We are asking for provisional approval of four-hundred eighty-eight thousand nine-hundred and ninety-nine dollars for tax expenditures.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Budmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Dragon?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
So if we go to page fifty-one. Here we start the planning budget. Salaries and benefits, there's really no substantial change here other than programmed increases to salaries and benefits. Page fifty-two. In planning operations, you will note the Goodrich Island Planning Commission request for support has been moved out of the planning budget, and then as we've talked previously, now resides in civic support. Overall, planning expenditures are projected to decrease four-point-four-one percent. We are asking for provisional approval of three-hundred fifty-nine thousand two-hundred and twenty dollars for planning expenditures. So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Budmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Dragon?
Aye. Passes seven to zero.
If we go to page fifty-three. Building official budget. Salaries and benefits, there's no substantial change here other than the programmed increase in salaries and benefits. Go to the next page, page forty-four. This budget adds to the training line. It adds funds to the training line to account the assistant building inspectors required courses and also accounts for increased contractor costs due to the increase in the number of inspections we are seeing due to a substantial uptick in home renovations. We are also accounting for increased advertising costs due to an increase in the number and fees associated with the zoning board review required advertisements. Overall, the expenditures are projected to increase by twelve-point-one-five percent. And we are asking for provisional approval of three-hundred eighty-five thousand seven-hundred and ninety-six dollars for the building officials budget.
So moved.
Second for discussion. I just have a question about the pension 401K, big jump, eleven-point-seven-four percent. Small dollars, but just curious. That is because, I believe, and I'll get back to on that, but I believe there was an addition. Somebody was not in the oral on, his office, to join in. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Budmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Dragon?
Aye. Motion passes.
So if we go to page fifty-five. This is the planning board and liaison reporting director. This budget reflects a two-percent raise for the admin officer, I'm sorry, the admin officer. And a slight increase in the recording secretary fees. We ask for provisional approval of thirty-eight thousand three-hundred and four dollars for planning board expenditures. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Budmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Dragon?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Page fifty-six. Have the economic development or the executive director of business developments budget. The exception of a slight raise, there's no significant change to this budget. Overall, we protect a one-point-seventeen percent increase in expenditures and ask for provisional approval of forty-three thousand two-hundred and sixty-four dollars for economic development.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Budmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Dragon?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Page sixty-six.
Mr. President, it's, we're hitting nine o'clock.
Ten.
Ten o'clock, excuse me. And I know we're getting close, but we're still going to have to have a meeting tomorrow night.
Yeah.
And we don't have much left. But I.
Quick one tomorrow night.
Well, I, I believe we should have, we should finish off what we have and also allow for any questions for people who may have anticipated that we're going to go through other budgets tomorrow night. So I think, I just think we need some flexibility tomorrow night, that's all.
Yes. Two minutes to ten, so I'm okay to, I'm okay to continue tomorrow night. We don't have much left, but we, but we still have to get through it, so, yeah.
Mr. President, would it, would excuse Chief Peters from having to attend tomorrow if we just did the police tonight?
We already did the police.
We already did the police.
I'm sorry.
About three hours.
And that's why we're ending now, Ms. Jufusa.
Yes, that's a great point. That's a great point.
I think it's past my bedtime.
I appreciate everyone's hanging in there because it was helpful to get through some of these tonight. And, yeah, we should, we have a big team shape to finish up tomorrow night. Also, we can get some answers to some of those earlier questions. We'll try to do that as well. Thank you all. And.
Motion to adjourn? Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jufusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Budmeyer? Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Dragon?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all, and we will see you tomorrow night.
Have a good night.
Good night.